You're on for the invocation of pledge. All right. Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. Let's see who's next.
I can do it. I'm in the, otherwise I can do it.
Okay, Councilmember Brown, very good. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 4th Oshkosh Council Meeting. Please take the roll, Pam.
Mugur.
Here.
Erickson. Erickson.
Here.
Teshel.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Rosie.
Here.
Al Mary.
Here.
Present seven.
All right, Councilmember Mugur will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the common people, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this evening, we have a public hearing on the city budgets. And Pam, did we have anyone registered to speak?
No, we do not.
All right. Second for public hearing on the city budget. And third and final call for the city budget. I believe Mr. Van Campol has a presentation he would like to offer. For those of you watching at home and summary for council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of some of the bigger picture items dealing with the 2021 operating budget. So the first slide of the presentation is really a summary of all the sources of funds. This includes the general fund and enterprise fund. You can find this on your budget book on page seven. But of note, you'll see the general revenues make up about 33% of our total sources of funds. Enterprise funds is about a third or 34%. And then we have a bunch of other parts that go into our budget source of funding. On the next slide, while we have all of these different sources, or excuse me, we have all these different sources. What I wanted to point out on this slide is that if you go back and look from 2014 through 2021, the blue line graph, the darker blue one at the bottom, is our shared revenue history. And I think I shared some of this with council when we had our workshops. And you can see that that is flat or going down. Not sure if you can read the numbers in the legend part. But you should have gotten a copy of the presentation in a PDF form. So if you have that available, those numbers should be a little bit bigger. And the aqua color is the total levy. And you can see that goes up a little bit. And then the maroon colored at the top is all the other sources of revenue that comes in. Just giving you a snapshot from 2011 through 2021. The next slide will show all of the sources of funds, or all the uses, excuse me, I apologize, all the uses of the funds. Again, most of that, a third of that's going out to our enterprise fund, which is water, sewer, water building. We have a lot going towards debt service, the maroon bottom slice, about 13%. And 50% of all. Fund, which is the main operating fund for all of our departments with some exceptions. And we'll go into that in just a little bit. But you can kind of see the different breakdowns of the different uses of funds. So Tony, could you just advance that to the next slide for me, please? So if you look at just the general fund revenue, again, the general fund is the primary operating fund for the city with certain exceptions. Most of the money coming into our general fund is through tax levy, about 46%. Comes in from intergovernmental revenues and shared revenue is just one part of that intergovernmental revenue slice. So there's some other funding that we get, state highway aids and those type of things. We also get a lot of questions about license and permits. That's really a small slice of the pie. Fines and forfeitures, our charges for services, internal charges make up a fairly substantial part. But this is where all the revenue comes into the general fund. If you could advance that to the next slide, please. This is similar to page in the budget book that actually has the details. This is breaking it out by revenue source and it is on page, let's see what's. Page 11, which is a summary of the revenue expenditures. But this is just the revenue portion. And in total, we're going up about 1.9%, but really intergovernmental revenues is going down by about just over a percent. So you know, a lot of impact is still being felt on the need for property tax revenue within our general fund. I think that's one of the stories I wanted to share with you. In the next slide, I think we have a breakdown of revenue. Just to kind of give you a flavor of how things have changed over the last 10 years or so. We have more of our general fund coming in from shared revenue, about 24%. We're down to 20% of our revenue from shared revenue. Again, I think I shared this at our workshop. But we're also having a greater dependence on the levy. The levy is up to 42%. 10 years ago, it was less than 10%. So you can kind of see the shift and the pressure of financing our services with property tax levy, which continues in 2021. The next slide is a brief breakdown of our expenditures. Most of our expenditures are related to public safety. That's 6% of our general fund expenditures. General government's about 13% and public works is about 13%. And we have a bunch of other miscellaneous slices. But by far, the biggest expense in our general fund is our public safety area. Next slide is a recap of all the types of expenditures we have. It's not by department, so it has labor, indirect labor, payroll benefits. Overall, we're looking at a 1.9% increase on the general fund. Again, most of that is in the area of personnel and labor, either direct or indirect or payroll benefits. For the revenue expenditures, at the end of the year, the difference rolls into fund balance and governmental accounting. You don't have owner's equity. We have fund balance. We've talked about fund balance in the past. We looked at the policy just recently, within the last month or so. We are at the upper limits of our general fund balance. You can kind of see we've had some really good growth recently. And we could talk about fund balance a little bit later on in the workshop or if there's questions. But we're within our limits. We're at the upper limits. We want it to be between 16 and 30% of this next year's budget. And we're right about there. There's actually a actual number in the budget. It's on page nine. So if you're looking for the actual numbers. After the general fund balance, I think the next slide that we want to show you is just how our levy is allocated. We put general, we put tax levy into various funds. And like I said, most of the operations in the general fund. We have special revenue funds for garbage collection, street lighting, museum, senior services, library, a bunch of other little components. We also have debt service that goes out to pay for previously issued debt. And that's a good chunk of our tax levy, about 27%. I think the slide that's right after this will show the actual numbers. That was just kind of a pie chart showing that. Been able to hold the line on increases in the levy for all these other special revenue uses, with the exception of garbage collection. We have more money, more funding into capital projects of current dollars. For 2021, we're going to see a reduction in the amount of levy needed for debt service. But we still have some growth of levy dollars going into the general fund as we rely more and more on the tax levy to support our services. For the general fund, that increase is about 10%. So what does it mean to the basic homeowner or property owner in the city of Oshkosh? The next slide is an allocation showing the valuation. We spread the levy out based on total valuation without our tax increment districts. So we have the assessed valuation without tax increment districts. We have the equalized value without tax increment district. Our assessed tax rate is estimated to go up 2.1% of that. So that's a 20% increase in our assessed tax rate. The assessed tax rate is actually going down, but we're spreading the taxes based on the assessed. The equalize is just an estimate to look at the fair market value of property. If our assessments were going up as fast as the real estate market was increasing, we would actually have our rates going down. What I really wanted to show you on this is if we look at $150,000 as a typical home in the city of Oshkosh, the tax increase for 2021 would be $35.79, which is just over 2%. So a typical homeowner is going to see about a $36 increase in property taxes for city services. This is just the city portion. It's important for the residents to understand this is city taxes only. So $1,671.19 is a typical charge on $150,000 house within the city of Oshkosh. Last year, I started showing this last slide and I want to just point it out. If we, oh, I'm sorry, I got one more slide on tax rates first before I get to monthly cost. This is just a recap showing a historical trend on the blue being the assessed tax rates going up. And you can see that the orange, the equalized rates are actually going down. We kind of jumped ahead to this last slide then, which is the monthly cost for city services. Again, a typical homeowner would be paying $139.27 for city services on a monthly basis. And this is the breakdown to the various categories from debt service to the operation of the cemetery and all other functions. So we kind of put it in the lobby so people see this. It's just a recap of how much it costs to provide police and fire, public works, library, general government, garbage collection, transit, parks, street lighting, museum for a typical property owner in the city of Oshkosh. So again, I wanted to be very brief in my comments. I don't know if there's any of those slides, if you want me to go back and cover anything more. But that's kind of a bigger picture of where the 2021 budget is going to be at for, in its current state without any that was also submitted to council for their consideration.
Well, thank you, Russ. Certainly appreciate that last slide. I know that was in addition, I believe, last year, capturing that monthly breakdown for homeowners. So I will open up to council members for discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, a quick question for Russ. That 2009 tax rate number of 9%. I mean, that seems pretty jarring. Can you, I guess, can you expand on what has changed since then?
Yeah. Had a conversation with the city manager and we talked about this. There's, the city has moved some things out of the general fund and into these other special revenue funds. That explains some of it, but a lot of it is the cost of providing, the services that our residents have come to expect keep increasing. But the funding that we get from the state, especially if you're looking at shared revenue. We become more dependent on property taxes over the years. So that's, that's a real difficult situation. And sometimes that gets lost with, in trying to tell a story to residents. For a while, we, it was, it was like a stool where you had a third of your money coming in from the levy, a third coming in from revenue sources and a third from other sources. And it's really become kind of offside. And so that, those pressures continue to mount. And we continue to try to balance those services as best as we can. But it becomes more weighted to dependence on property taxes to pay for our services.
Yeah. I appreciate Councilmember Ford bringing up that item. And you know, Russ and I really went back and forth and debated this one. But the story that I think Russ really wants to keep pushing is that shared revenue is not anything what it used to be. When adjusted for inflation, we've had a dramatic reduction in shared revenue. And Russ is only giving you an 11-year view of this thing. You go back another decade prior and our numbers haven't changed much at all. There was a big cut from 11 to 12 as a result of the Acts 10 and 32. I mean, it was the cuts to us picking up insurance, or excuse me, us returning to employees the employee share of WRS. It was, you know, done under the guise of, oh, we're going to save the taxpayers' money. But meanwhile, the state said, for every dollar we're cutting you, or every dollar you're cutting in cost to your employees, we're going to cut you about a dollar and 20 in shared revenue. So they cut us even more than what they, they saved us. And I use that as a blanket statement because it was also health insurance that we increased costs for employees. It wasn't just the share of WRS, but that was clearly the biggest. And it certainly was a savings to the city. But on the revenue side of the ledger, we had about a dollar 20 cut for every dollar we saved. So and again, the state did that because their revenue was going down and that's understandable. The revenue has long since recovered. They've rebounded quite well. And they have not restored our funds to even 2009 levels that Russ is showing you on the sheet. So I think that's the real dramatic story. And I know, Mike, you know, some of that because you teach that in your classes as well. But this is the reality and the impact we get from this. So I really appreciate Russ continuing to drive this point because it's a story that just continues to need to be told.
Thank you, Mark. We talk about some, we talk about incremental changes, but that was, you know, over a 10-year period, it's been substantial.
I think it's in, just real quick, two quick points. I think it's important to point out that we've seen that reduction in shared revenue. And given what's likely to be the negative financial impacts of COVID on, you know, income tax money going into the state level, we should really be, we shouldn't be shocked if we see that go down, perhaps dramatically over the next, over the next two years. So that was a story that got us to this point. That's going to be a continuing story. But I also want to point out and commend some of the efforts of city staff and previous council members in dealing with some of these challenges. And the thing that stuck out to me was looking at that percentage of debt service in that pie being 13%. Because if you go and you run, you take a look at the Oshkosh budget from 2010, that number was about 26.1%. I mean, that's, you know, the actions taken by former council members and the refinancing of loans and just getting control of that has freed up more, more money for spending on the good stuff. So well done on that front.
Thank you. Since you got me on a roll with state aid, you know, Councilmember Allison Osby brought up at one of our workshops the question about the municipal services payment program. And over the past decade, you know, or two decades, it's gone from 80 cents on the dollar getting reimbursed to now less than 35 cents. Again, we would have another, Russ, what did you estimate? Because I had it wrong and I think I, you corrected me, but we're losing about a million eight annually. I think I said it should be a million eight. I was wrong. It should be a million eight more. Yes, yes. And that's, you know, that's another one. So you take the, the impact of all those and then people say, well, why are our property taxes going up? The state is no longer sharing like they used to. They can call it shared revenue, but it's pennies on the dollar now. I'll get off my, I'll get off my stump, Madam Mayor, sorry.
Other council members? Well, I guess we're now at the point where we need to have a discussion and give direction on the budget to city manager. My apologies, I, I just had a moment where I was like, wait a minute, are we voting on this? No, the 10th, November 10th. Lost a little bit of sleep last night, so just a little lapse.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, in the memo that, out with the packet, we did have eight amendments that were offered up. Some of them have been offered by specific council members, some have not. And we have one more chance up till, you know, if you can get them into me tomorrow. We can incorporate that. My main mission tomorrow is to prepare the final resolution for council's consideration for next Tuesday's meeting. So we would be asking you to adopt the budget, to adopt the levy and to approve financing for capital improvement projects for 2021. So if there's any questions from council, we can talk about anything in the operating budget and/or capital projects. But that would be the next step in the process. And you do have just one more opportunity up through tomorrow to present any other amendments that you would like to offer.
Yes, it would be much appreciated if those could get in promptly so that we don't have last-minute alligator wrestling. I'll just call it that.
Well, I would call, just giving you good financial information that, you know, for each amendment that has an impact on the levy, I have identified how much that enhancement would cost on the levy and on the mill rate and then a cumulative number. So I just want to be able to give all the council members what those costs may be. So that's why we ask for things to get to us by tomorrow.
Madam Mayor, if it's all right, I think I made a few suggested amendments.
Certainly.
Maybe appropriate if I state my case for my suggested amendments and we kind of start the conversation there, maybe.
Very well, go ahead.
So down the bottom half, we've got a couple that don't impact the levy. We kind of talked about these during our budget hearings. I think they're numbered number five and number six for the water filtration and water distribution and under the water utility. I support these because of the, the need in that specific area for additional staff. Succession planning as well as making sure there's enough qualified staff in those areas at all times, as well as to reduce the burden and the stress that's currently on that, that sector of our, our organization. So James, if I left anything out in terms of the need on those, feel free to jump in. I'll, I'll ask you to. But I think I, I think I spoke highly of these at our budget hearing. We haven't had a chance to visit those places. They could use a little, they could use these positions to make sure that those places are, are running as they should going forward. So I don't know what questions council has on my suggestions or kind of discussion we want. Those two are on the table to talk about right now.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I recently had the pleasure of touring the water facilities. And it reminded me of something my dad always says, don't complain about the brakes in your car when you got to get them replaced. Because what are you going to do? It's kind of what the water plant is. There's a lot going on in there and they clearly need the staff. And I think it's something that we, we need to invest in. So I'm all in favor of those two.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I agree with Mr. Mugur and Mr. Ford. It has been something that we've talked about in the past budget cycles. But definitely something that I think is glaring. I have my issues with proposing that, those amendments to the budget and adding them in.
And then I would just, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Crowsey.
I would also agree with amendment proposal enhancements. Councilmember Mugur made, I think they're very important and I see that's worth taxpayer money. And it's no impact on the levy, so it's even better. Thank you.
And then if I could just ask for a little clarification then from either Mr. Van Campol or Mr. Roloff, why we have those in, in that area that don't impact the levy as opposed to up under the department program proposed amendments impacting the levy?
Madam Mayor, those are in that bottom box, not impacting the levy because those would actually be offset by their utility rates and not tax levy. So those expenses would be, or expenditures would directly be in the water utility in the filtration plan and distribution areas and would be covered by rates as opposed to being covered by levy.
And the other two are proposed, enhancement one and enhancement eight that you proposed. Those would be proposed to come out of fund balance, not from levy. So that's why they're down in that section.
Yes.
They would, we would, depending on which option council chose, we would create, we have an internal benefits fund already. So these funds would just move into that fund. And then they'd be administered out of that fund to have a dedicated seed money, as it were, for those programs.
All right, and I'll just clarify too, the amendment that I offered on the internal benefit fund, that's number eight. This is not in addition to number one, where the Create Tuition Assistance Program, $100,000 is. What I'm suggesting here is a different variation. variation on that theme, and that we fund $50,000 in the tuition assistance program, and 50,000 towards a down payment assistance program with regard to city employees that may wish to locate inside city limits or purchase a home in city limits. So it is, I just wanted to clarify that, that I don't offer that as an addition to number one. It's a different dollar amount that I'm supporting for the tuition assistance program, and then coupled with the opportunity for assistance for residing in the city limits. Councilmember Erickson, and then Mugger.
Thank you. Just a quick clarifying question about the two positions for water filtration and distribution. Would that affect the, the utility rates at all, adding those two positions? Could you just clarify that?
Russ, I don't know if you want to start or if you want me to?
I can start. We have looked at our operating costs, and based on my calculations and the presentation that we presented to council from others, the rate it will be sufficient to cover these costs.
I think the long answer is that everything that presumes of the rate, but we don't necessarily look in the expenditure of the utility and say, this will immediately have an impact on rates. Because we have to take a look at our net income and how it, and are we getting the proper rate of return? Most of the rates are based on the assets under our control, which are hundreds of millions of dollars, and then what our expenses are. This will increase overall expenses, so I don't want to make you think, oh, no, we won't do it. Indirectly, the answer to your question is yes. Directly, no, it won't have an immediate effect. We're going to need to raise the rates by a penny per, you know, 1,000 gallons or something like that. It, it doesn't work that way. They take a very large macro approach when they look at rates, but that number's going to be in there because it's going to impact net income. But then I would go back to the costs that we are going to incur to, to train. To them, I think James can speak to each of those individually. The filtration plant, the operation supervisor, we talked earlier, and I think the reason for the tuition assistance program is for succession planning, creating that supervisor. We don't have supervisory. James, you probably explain it better than I can, but we don't, we have limited supervision of our staff. We only have one supervisor over there. The super plant is, is effectively two. We need more presence. James, go ahead, please.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll jump in and bail you out a little bit there. Really, the water filtration plant is the only one of our facilities that, you know, does not have a backup supervision. You know, at water distribution, we've got a manager and assistant manager. At the wastewater treatment plant, we've got the plant manager, and then an operations and a maintenance supervisor. So we've got three supervisors there. At water filtration, it, it is only the plant manager in a supervisor or management position. You know, as we've talked about before, you know, we talked about it a year ago with the challenges of the operators and the shift schedules. You know, we've certainly had trouble filling some of those positions due to the shift schedules, and, you know, with the pandemic, we haven't been able to get certifications. So, you know, it's getting the additional supervisor and getting, you know, a supervisor who is a certified operator to help us with all of the other challenges that we have at the plant.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mugger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't want to move on unless, unless council's ready to, but if, if anybody else has any questions, I guess, on the, those two positions, I'd prefer to talk about those before I move on to the tuition thing. So I don't know if Mr. Peschall or anybody else wanted to jump in, but just wanted to make sure I'm not moving ahead faster than everybody else is ready, so.
I didn't see any other hands, but certainly I, I don't want to rush anyone either.
Sounds good. Well, we can always come back. I just wanted to make sure we're, we're talking about them, you know, kind of individually a little bit, too. Madam Mayor touched on the, the education fund a little bit. The tuition reimbursement fund, I guess, is maybe the more appropriate thing to call it. So I've offered this up as, as an amendment to, to help further our staff. And I'll be honest, it is a little self-serving as well. Not only do they receive a benefit, but hopefully, the intention is that the city itself receives a substantial benefit as well, that when the time comes, not just for, at the director level, but manager and, and supervisory levels, that when times come for openings and roles, that our staff is prepared, they're educated, and they're ready to, to put their name into the hat and be a part of the process, that we have a, a ready workforce right here in the building already, and in the city already, that can, can pick up the reins of an open spot and, and keep moving forward for us. So I think it's important. I think it's something that will help our workforce. We've seen it, you know, we've seen over the last couple of years when we've had changes in leadership in different departments. We need to make sure that our, our staff is, you know, ready, whether it's at the bachelor's degree level or associates, or, or even master's degree levels for education, and I think it's good to support our people. I think this dollar amount is important. I think it gives us plenty to get started, and it doesn't limit us. I don't think, I don't think it limits us. I think that it allows accessibility and equity to everybody in the workforce in, in our organization, that we shouldn't have to be picking and choosing who, who's the better candidate and who's more qualified for it, that if they, if they qualify, they get it. And that, that should be the, that should be the easy answer. So I think that's the long and short of it. I think I talked about it briefly before as well during the budget hearing, but that's the reason for, for my amendment. I guess on a tangent, I appreciate the mayor offering a, you know, a second option. I'm not, I'm not that in favor of it. I don't see the need for it as much, but I'm not opposed to learning more about it as well, maybe as a, just on its own type of program. I, I don't know enough to, to say no to it, but I definitely do not know enough to say yes to it, to support it at this point. So that's my thoughts.
Yes, and Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Crowsey has a question?
Sure. On your proposal for the down payment assistant mayor, what is your ideas? Like, is it based on having employment for a certain amount of years and then X amount of dollars for down payment? Do we have a cap on that? What's your ideas for that proposal?
Sure. So the thought was that while, while I strongly am in support of the tuition assistance program, first off, I also wanted to ask, City Manager mentioned that, or maybe it was Mr. Van Goffel, that we already have an internal benefit fund. And, and I guess I would just ask, how much we have in there, and what, what are those existing funds earmarked for? And then in response to you and, and the question regarding the down payment assistance program, you know, we have a, a very significant number of our city employees that, that don't live in the city. And that's not, I think, necessarily a bad thing, but to give incentive to move back into the city, help us with our efforts to revitalize neighborhoods. It's, it's kind of a variation on the theme of the HUD, Good Neighbor Next Door, whereby public safety, teachers, and that have an opportunity to purchase homes through HUD at a discounted rate. As, as I understand it, there's only one in the entire county that that would be, but also to recapture some of those tax dollars that are going outside of the city in terms of property tax. And also, there may be folks who would like to avail themselves of that, that may not necessarily want to take advantage of the tuition assistance fund, and recognizing that, you know, there are no big fat raises this year. So just trying to offer a little more complete package. As far as time and, you know, who would be eligible, it was my thought that it would be open to all city employees, but I would leave that to the, the administrative staff to, I guess, determine how long the individual taking advantage of that benefit would need to, I guess, be here to kind of recoup that. I think City Manager mentioned, mentioned some things in the form of forgivable loans after a period of time.
I will answer the question about the internal benefit fund. That's the term Russ is using in a more general sense. The council, a few years back, when we got out of our self-insured, self-insured health insurance plan, that's, the funds there are the leftover funds from that program. Council was very specific that they did not want those funds commingled and used for other purposes, and we've kept it for health insurance program costs only. And the idea is that in the, in the future, if we go back to a self-insured plan, which I would expect at some point in the future we would, at that time, we would need some seed money, and those funds would be there, and that represents seed money from, from all the different departments, all the different funds. So everybody who was previously part of it, it's sort of like a mutual insurance company. Russ, with this idea, would put those, that 100,000 and segregate it within that fund, but the, the purpose of the fund is really to, to be seed money for an eventual return to a self-insured health insurance program. The council just recently approved a self-insured plan for our dental program, so that'll be out, that'll also be out of that fund. But that's what the funds were intended for. And once we get back into self-insurance, we have an obligation to, to have expenditures go in and out of that fund. Russ, did I capture that pretty well?
Yep. And if you're looking for the specifics on that, that's on page 361 and 362 of your budget book. And as Mark stated, that's really the leftover, the fund balance there is the leftover from our, when we're self-insured. So we have a goal and accomplishments in there, along with a mission statement, so.
So that's the 1.8 million?
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. So the question I had for you, Mayor, was when you were looking at splitting the 100,000 and the 50 towards, you know, the down payments, was that, so that's more of like a relocation incentive? Is that what you were thinking?
Yes, to incentivize moving inside the city limits.
Have, have we had, and maybe staff can answer this, have we had employees that have mentioned that they would like to do that, that, that's something that if there was an incentive, they would do? Mr. Roloff, maybe, or Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, it's interesting. I would draw the council's attention to this month's municipality magazine. There was an interesting article on residency incentives. It did not include any housing type of assistance, but most of them were pretty modest, oh, enhancers, either a little bit on the wage side, or either a, or a contribution to like a deferred comp, or a health savings account, things like that. Those seem to be the ones. I did not see an incentive program for housing. I don't believe that came up necessarily. You know, one of the reasons that the, the whole tuition assistance program idea, I asked Chief Stanley to introduce that because he had done some research with his employees. And that was, again, this was about succession planning as opposed to recruitment. And some of the, the West Dallas one is the one I'm familiar with, because I've got some, I, I was familiar with how that was working, and I talked to their administrator about that one. And essentially, it's an, it's a, it's a, an enhancer. What is it? It's a dollar to an hour, something like that?
Yeah. Those are the programs that I'm more familiar with. You know, I apologize, I'm not as familiar with the program that Mayor Paul Mary is talking about, but the programs I am familiar with are the ones that, that Mark mentioned in West Dallas. I think they have a program like that in Capana, and it's really designed to encourage people to live in the city, rather than have a formal, back in the day when residency was legalized in the state of Wisconsin, some communities took a different tack. And so they provide a stipend for people over above their wage to live inside the city. That's what West Dallas does. So that, that's how those programs work.
And I, I just would add too, that, you know, my intent was not to restrict this to existing employees, but as, as was mentioned, as an additional enhancement for the recruitment package as well. You know, we're, we're looking at adding several firefighters, potentially, several, a couple of police officers, and, you know, as a, an additional, I guess, recruiting tool, as well as, like I say, trying to recapture, you know, some of those property taxes that, that leak out into the, the surrounding towns and cities.
So I, I, oh, if, if I can continue. So I, I like where you're going with it. I like, I like the idea of, if it's possible to have, you know, as many of our employees located within the city. You know, I'm, again, I think maybe even to Mr. Mugger's point, I don't know that I know enough about it to make a decision, you know, how it necessarily works, because what I would never want to have is where we're somehow responsible for, you know, through that incentive program, meeting expectations of down payments for, you know, banking and financing and things like that, which, you know, maybe this is something that once they do the closing, it's reimbursed at the end, or to Mr. Fitzpatrick's point, they do a different thing down in, in West Dallas. So I don't know. In some ways, when we talk about the, the, the tuition reimbursement program, I kind of think it'd be nice, like, if we're going to start a program, to start one, and then if we're going to look at, you know, a somehow, like a second incentive, maybe we look at it a different year, just to have more money focused in one area. I guess I'm still, I guess I'm still open to it. The question I do have regarding tuition reimbursement, is that strictly for two, two-year degrees, four-year degrees, and masters, or would that also include, like, certificates? So say, for instance, if we had somebody working in one particular department, but they wanted to go to another area that requires, required certification, say like welding or something like that, would the tuition reimbursement count towards that?
I'll let Mr. Fitzpatrick answer the bulk of that, because it really comes down to what ultimately council would approve in a policy that we would bring to you. But John, you know, you've been taking a look at that regarding, I think Michelle Venky's been looking at career ladders, and this is dovetailing with the development of career ladders to show to employees, here are career paths you can take within our organization, so that you can see there's, there's more to your career than the job you're in currently.
Just one, just one moment. Councilmember Peschall wanted to ask a question?
Fair night. I guess my question is, is kind of along the path that I think Mark is taking with, with Mr. Fitzpatrick. And, and my understanding is that if we approve this in the budget, we're not necessarily approving the program, we're providing the seed money and the direction to Mr. Fitzpatrick and his staff to create what that program will be like, and then to bring that back to us. Is that, is that a correct assumption?
You are correct. The, you would, this would be merely appropriating it. The authorization would still The authorization would still need to come from council. And Mr. Fitzpatrick would work on a policy to bring forth for council to authorize this program.
Okay, so we don't, we don't really know at this point what these programs are going to be like. We're just putting out a concept of something that we want to build around, correct?
We've been working on this internally for a while. So Mr. Fitzpatrick probably has his, his general ideas gelling on this because it was well received by council at the budget workshops. So his staff has been doing a little more due diligence on this. And I think we're getting close. But, you know, to Councilmember Allison Osby's, if it, if the classwork that that person seeking is consistent with a career path, that's reasonable. If somebody wanted to, well, I think Mr. Muggerhour and I were talking about it when he initially pitched it. If somebody comes in and says, I want to take art, that might be not, maybe not so good. But, you know, quite honestly, if it had to do with art history that related to museum and the person was working at the museum, we would have to listen to that and say, tell us more about what you have in mind. So it's got to meet up with a career path. And I think that's what, that's one of the things that HR has been working on for quite a while. But we want to be able to tell people when they get to our organization, here's a career path for you. This isn't, we don't want you to feel that you have a dead-end job. And Fitz, I know you've been working on that with Michelle.
So along those lines, then too, if I could just, before Fitz, I know you're gonna get, I know you're gonna get in here. But Councilmember Allison Osby, when you asked the question about certification, the first thing that came to my mind, for example, would be, you know, it may not necessarily be higher ed. But let's say, for example, one of our junior planners wanted to go for AICP certification, which is, you know, a very desirable career ladder step in the planning world. So Mr. Fitzpatrick, would this include something along those lines, as was asked?
Well, I am pretty familiar with these sorts of programs. And I did do, you know, some significant research beyond that. You know, I have some information from the university and some other private companies. And, you know, they're structured quite a bit alike. The, you know, I drafted some of the stuff. I don't have it completely finished yet. But really, the program is designed to provide, it's more development oriented. It's more, whereas training, individual training will still be budgeted in people's operating budget. The departments will still take care of that. This is really designed to develop employees. And that can really go into two different tracks. The one track would be, they want to seek a degree because they want to advance and maybe become a supervisor, a manager, a department ed. Or they may be interested in another, a different sort of career with the city. And we may be also interested in them pursuing that. For example, we have people that are engineering techs. You know, they may be interested in becoming engineers. We have very technical positions that are situated in the utilities that we talked about earlier. And sometimes those positions are very difficult to fill because they're so specialized. And we've worked internally for quite a long time. The brand has been very good about working with other employees in public works to try to help them receive some of the certifications that they need from the DNR and some of the credentials that they may need to be able to operate in our water and wastewater treatment plants. So, you know, I see this as an advantaged program where we can not only develop our, our future managers and supervisors, but if we have employees and we have an acute need where we have specialized positions and someone wants to pursue the possibility of, you know, seeking a degree or getting certification, like for example, from the DNR, that we would be interested in helping them do that. That's kind of how I see it happening. I don't, I don't know necessarily about credentialing as it relates to professional certifications. So that's something that we have to discuss. But it's a possibility.
I would say, you know, without getting into the weeds, that we already do some of that to help people get professional certifications.
Yes.
And I saw Alan is also here, so he could use that as an example. But a similar one would be if somebody in Russ's staff, for example, wanted to get their CPA. You don't necessarily, you have to go get your degree first. So depends on where they are. If they've already got their accounting degree, there might be some things to do to get the CPA, but it's not always a class or anything like that. They may have already done the class. Versus somebody who says, I'm, you know, I would like to get an accounting degree and then get my CPA. Well, this tuition reimbursement program would help them get their degree in accounting, which is the first step towards becoming CPA. It depends, but I know Alan has dealt with this with his staff who, because an AICP type of certification is certainly desirable. We look for that. Alan is an AICP certified planner. And that was certainly, you know, a big factor in his credentials as we were looking at it. So Alan, I don't know if you've got any comment on that, but I think you've already tried to work with that with your staff.
Yes, if I could chime in a little bit, at least on the planning side, the AICP designation is part of our career ladder that we've already worked with HR about as well. So as you look at your career ladder, the applicant or the employee can see, okay, to advance to this level or this level, I need to do these things. And AICP would be one of those elements that we'd be looking for, for those advancements. So I think that, as Mr. Fitzpatrick was indicating, would be somewhere in that discussion.
You know, Alan's pretty modest. He and Darren Birch worked pretty hard with us to restructure those positions, those classifications and those job families to set up that hierarchy. So that's been pretty successful. We reorganized in James Robbie's department. You know, we still have a little bit of work to do with core competency identification. But the idea is, as we talked about, you know, it's a lot easier for us to develop our own employees than sometimes get someone from the outside. And if we can provide that opportunity for our employees, they're a known commodity, they've done a good job for us, it would really be an advantage for us to be able to do that.
Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to piggyback and follow up with what Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned there. You know, I know FIRE is the one that brought this to us this year. Council had a, had a discussion last year about this same topic. And then COVID hit and we didn't get a chance to pull the trigger on it. So I appreciate FIRE bringing it to us, Chief Stanley. But, you know, the intention is to keep who we have here and help them grow so that, you know, those that are already here don't leave. Kind of to your point with the housing, kind of to correlate it to that, that we don't want them leaving. And we want to try to keep them around and grow them and be homegrown, so. And I had a great conversation with, with Mr. Fitzpatrick. And I guess to give council some clarity in terms of just some of the information that, that we talked about. I'm familiar with some of these programs in the private sector as well. And obviously, private and public is totally different things. Mr. Roloff mentioned it, right? I did have a comment about, you know, if a firefighter came in and wanted to come get an art degree, that might be a questionable request. But as, as Mark mentioned, if somebody in the, you know, in the museum has something that it applies to their, their trade and their field, of course. But the biggest thing that I expressed to Mr. Fitzpatrick was regarding the policy, the, and the procedure itself, I think that Mr. Puschel was asking about, is it's got to be fair, it's got to be equitable, it's got to be accessible to all. And that it shouldn't come down to one individual. And I'll pick on Fitz, but it shouldn't come down to him being the decision maker on who qualifies and who doesn't. That, you know, we've only got a small pot and we've got a, you know, he's got to be the deciding factor. I don't like that idea. But I like that everyone has an equal chance at it and that it should help us across the board, no matter what department, to help us, you know, keep good people here and help them grow personally and professionally.
Councilmember Puschel.
Thank you. So my question is, and we've probably talked about this and it's just not in my head at this point. But let's just say the hundred thousand dollars that's out there. This is, is this, this is seed money for these programs to do this, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so then, is that, how long do, I mean, we don't know how well these programs might do within our, you know, within our staff. So do we have a thought of how far or how long a hundred thousand dollars might last us?
Well, one example, and we've talked this through, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, if we maximize the payment of, say, twenty-five hundred dollars per person per year, that would get us through forty employee years. If forty employees all one year, it would be gone immediately or within one year. If twenty employees were part of it, the hundred thousand would last us two years. So, you know, assuming, you know, ten people, the idea is we, we don't want the program to get cut unceremoniously through an annual budget process. We'd like to get an annual appropriation into this program. The seed money will enable us not to have to struggle with that immediately. But eventually, the fund, the departments would, the general fund would provide a contribution. Utility funds would provide a contribution. And the other funds, depending on what they were, we would make sure that that seed money is in there. Not unlike what everybody does when we had a self-insured health insurance. Every department paid into the program and then the funds were distributed from there. It's just a much targeted program. So, but if you think twenty-five hundred is a reasonable amount, it'll go through forty reimbursement. So I think there'll be an initial interest in the program. And then it'll wane a little bit, as, as they typically do. I always talk about employees having the kitchen table discussion with their spouse or significant other. And it's, it sounds great. And then that person isn't home on Wednesday nights to take care of the kids because they are at class or something like that. And then, then the interest wanes a little bit. And then they're like, yeah, but this is, you know, this will help our family grow in the future. And they make, then they readjust and they reget, they reengage in the program. This takes a while in some cases. This could take, you know, Fitz, I'm going to put you on the spot. You went through the master's program and it took you what? Did it take two years?
I think it took me about three or four years.
For the professors, it seemed like an eternity.
I was just going to say that. You kind of stole my thunder. And I'm kind of a slow learner, so I don't know if I'm a good example to be used.
But, you know, it took three, four years, so.
I see Councilmember Ford kind of chuckling in the background.
He heard the stories, is what he's saying.
He's moved them, yes.
But it could take three, four years. So if that maximum reimbursement was twenty-five hundred, we would be, for one employee, it could be five to ten thousand dollars. So we would have to reseed that money because if it takes that long for a master's degree, you know, it, it may take that long for a bachelor's degree. Certainly, depending on how far along that person is in their studies. Somebody mentioned the certifications, anything we can do to get people certified through the technical college system for our water or sewer treatment plants? Those, you got to get an associate's degree that is not an easy degree to get. That is not for the faint of heart. That's two years. And I think those kids do full-time. So to do it part-time, to get somebody who said, you know, maybe I want to go from being in the refuse division to working over at the treatment plant, that's a career ladder that we've identified for people. If, you know, a two-year program full-time is going to take three to four years to get through on a part-time basis.
And if I could just chip in a couple other little comments, you know, I think Mark has explained it very well. You know, and just going back to Councilmember Muggerhour's point, you know, we, we want to be able to accommodate as many people as we can. And, you know, having a healthy fund is going to allow us to do that. You know, if we get to a point where the fund dwindles and we don't have as much money, we have more demand than we have money. You know, I guess, in a way, it's a good problem to have, but, you know, that would be the governor on it. We, we've also looked at how some programs are constructed. And, you know, if they're working full-time, it may be difficult for them to go to school full-time. And we don't want them to, we don't want the job situation or their family situation to suffer too. So there will be some parameters that are, you know, built into the program to allow them to be successful. And as Mark said, it might take a little time. And, you know, he kind of drew me into the conversation with my own personal circumstance. But, you know, before I got my master's degree, I got my associate's degree and my bachelor's degree when I worked for the University of Wisconsin system. And that took me eleven years. So it's a long time. And, you know, I may not be a good example for a variety of reasons. But I think just providing this opportunity for our employees and their families, you know, I think it's a tremendous gesture by the council. And, you know, we appreciate the effort. And I think the employees will appreciate this opportunity too. And it really will help us organization.
So Councilmember Allison Osby has a question. And then I'm going to follow up with one after her.
Sure. And the reason why I bring it up, and I don't know, Mr. Puschel, when you had said something, you were asking your questions, I wasn't bringing up the question to force staff or pigeonhole them into having a set policy or, you know, exactly what the program was going to look like. But, you know, more my question was, what I think will happen is if it's a, if it's a broad offering of what it will cover, I think it will create a significant amount of interest perhaps within. And so it kind of goes back to being that this is a budget hearing. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money. And I think the mayor has, you know, I think her idea of having, you know, thinking about incentives to have people move into the city to broaden our tax base there, I think is a good one. But, you know, if, if what I'm hearing from staff and kind of the agreement that I'm seeing among, you know, fellow council members is that, you know, I'm kind of thinking versus splitting hairs this year, that maybe that full hundred thousand should go towards the tuition reimbursement program. That's kind of what I'm, I'm getting for it. And maybe we look at residency incentives or things like that, maybe at a different time. Just my thought.
Lori, you're muted.
I hit it twice. All right. Yes, so just kind of, thank you for that. Going back to what Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned, to accommodate as many people as possible. And I think about that a lot. And like I said, I'm sold on the tuition piece. But I think that, you know, every family or household may have different values or that may or may not fit. And so just recognizing some potential mutual benefits from offering housing assistance alongside with this. And then the other follow-up question is, since we already have this internal benefit fund, and as was talked about earlier, it's kind of set aside for, you know, the potential for self-funding insurance. But is it restricted for that? Or maybe I, maybe you already said that and I didn't catch it. Can there be other internal benefits that are applied for through that fund besides that? Or is it strictly, did you say that that was strictly separated off and compartmentalized?
The council kept it compartmentalized at the time we got rid of the program because the fund balance for a program back then required a fund balance of between a million and a half and two million dollars. And so we're, you know, we're on the, towards the upper end of that program, up towards that amount. But if we were to get back into it, you know, that, that number would probably have to be recalculated. And I would imagine that with current cost of health insurance, from what they were, what, five? And I would imagine that with current costs of health insurance, from what they were, what, five years ago? We've been out of the program, Fitz. You know, being upwards of, you know, a million eight to $2 million would probably be considered minimum seed money because there are cash flow issues with a, with an internal service fund of this nature because you have to fund all those insurances. So, that's why the recommendation of a, for our size, a million five to $2 million was identified as the fund balance we needed. We had gotten it down to about a million three in some of the closing years of the program and it was, it was pretty dicey from a cash flow standpoint. So...
So, maybe, so maybe, you know, I guess what I'm open to is, I know in the workshop where we had discussions about affordable housing, I believe Mr. Davis or maybe the consultant that was brought in had talked about the possibility of increasing the down payment assistance for sold-on cash, which has been set at $5,000 for quite some time. And so, you know, I guess I would, I would be interested in knowing whether or not, you know, we could move forward with increasing that. And that certainly would be available to anyone, whether or not they work for the city or, or not as it relates to going into specified neighborhoods. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Davis?
Yes. The consultant did point that out to us and we've added that to the, say, scoop of services we've actually included for that housing study to examine our existing housing programs to see if we need to change them to further achieve the goals that we set out for ourselves. So, that is on the agenda for that study.
And would not be restricted from, like, city employees, for example, would not be restricted from applying for that, would they?
They are currently, it's open to anybody at this point. So, city, these county employees, school district employees, private employees, everybody's can qualify.
All right. Thank you.
And I would add to that, Madam Mayor, that, you know, if the council wanted to expand that program to do something specifically for city employees, they could do that as well. And that would be an arguably proper use of those funds. It's, it's a different twist on homeownership, but it's homeownership nonetheless. That would probably be something that could be looked at. And that fund, because it has, that, that housing fund has a good fund balance in it as well. Some seed money set aside, no different than we set aside money in the RLF for capital catalyst type of thing. I mean, it's, it's a specialty within a specialty and there's nothing wrong with that.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have, oh, Councilmember Ford, I see your hand up there.
Yes. Thank you. Just, Madam Mayor, do you see the housing program as a kind of a talent attraction thing? A way to strengthen?
Yes.
A way to strengthen the middle class in town or both? Or just trying to...
Yes. So, a combination of, you know, so some of the, some of the genesis, for example, of this older HUD program of the good neighbor next door related to, you know, seeing some of the, the middle class move out to the, you know, beyond city limits and that and loss of that, I guess, kind of stable role model type figure. And, and again, the HUD program's a bit different because there's, specifically talks about law enforcement, firefighters, teachers, paramedics and that. And, and I guess I was looking at it as, yes, a combination of talent attraction to marry up with some of the other packaging along with, you know, some, some retention and recapture, if you will, if the, you know, if the timing is right. So, a combination is, is what I was looking at, Miss, Councilmember Ford. Are there any other enhancement-oriented questions or thoughts? Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question regarding for human resources, the study that's got a $62,000 price tag on it. I can tell you, I think out of some of the studies that we've done, that's a little bit on the pricier end. So, I'm just wondering for that amount of money, you know, what, what does that entail? What is it going to get us? What is it going to tell us? And more importantly, to explain that to the taxpayer at $62,000.
All right. I'm happy you brought that up, actually. Because I, I'm recommending that you don't approve that this cycle. And I can talk a little bit about what it is and, and that might make more sense. When we typically, prior to Acts 1032, we would take a look and at our, our pay structures and take a look at the marketplace and see if we were synced up. And we would do that every 10 years. Well, when Acts 10 and 32 took place, we had to consolidate a lot of pay ranges that were previously housed in collective bargaining agreements and incorporate those into our non-represented pay plan. But we've, we did that and we did the best that we could with that. And since then, we've done some mini-studies, like every three years. So, this would have been actually on that 10th year cycle. And then we would do a more robust class and comp study where we do just very detailed analysis associated with everyone's job, job description questionnaires and we would rerate their jobs. And, and one of the things that we're looking forward to when we can do this is to maybe stratify the classifications a little bit more. Right now, they're pretty compressed and the differentiation between them is, is very small. But the reason I don't think it's a good time to do this is because of everything that we're, we're experiencing with COVID and the circumstances that exist right now. We really need to get an accurate picture of what the marketplace is like. And I just don't think we'll get that accurate picture right now. I don't think it's a good spend of our money. But I want to just counsel to be aware that this is something that we'll have to do at some point in the future. I just didn't want you to lose sight of it and forget about it and be surprised when it comes back again. But we wouldn't be seeking funding this particular cycle for that program.
I just was a little bit, oh, go ahead. I just was, I think, a little bit surprised by the price tag because 10 years ago, if I remember correctly, I think we approved for the budget to do the compensation study. And like you said, all kind of the intricacies involved with that. I thought it was closer to somewhere around $40,000, $42,000. So, that's why I was, and granted, that was 10 years ago, but, well, sounds good.
I think you're pretty close, actually. And some of the mini-studies that we've done were, you know, $25,000 to $30,000 the last, on the last three-year cycle. So, I think your, your recollection is pretty good, but this will be a pretty in-depth study. And, and as I said, we haven't done one of those since Acts 10 and 32, you know, which is all the way back to 2012 right now too. So...
Well, I appreciate your comments.
Sure. You're welcome. Thanks for asking.
So, I guess the one question is, John, if you're not recommending this cycle for that, why is it on our enhancement sheet?
I thought it was important and I talked to City Manager Roloff and, and Finance Director Van Gompul just to make sure that I submitted it as part of the budget process and recommended that it not be approved. But I think they wanted to make sure that you saw it, you know, and not presume, even though I'm not recommending it, that, you know, it's certainly you still decide what's in the budget and what's not in the budget. So, it gives me an opportunity to just provide that information in background. So, when it comes back, it won't be a surprise, but, but also not to just take it out of your hands just based on my opinion. They wanted to just respectfully list it.
In a COVID world, this would have been the appropriate year to do it. I don't think the results, and if we're going to spend, as Councilmember Allison Osby points out, we're going to spend 62 grand, which inflation-adjusted, that, that didn't surprise me at all. But if we're going to spend $62,000, we ought to have a really good look at the market. The market is so screwed up right now. I don't know if I want to trust the market to reflect...
I agree 100%.
Market condition. So, it's really just to get it on the radar because next year's going to be tough. I mean, I'm, I'm just, you know, I don't want to be all gloom and doom, but '22, I think it's going to be our challenging year. And if I'm wrong, then we absolutely should be doing the study in '22. It's one-time monies. We won't do it for another decade. But we, we know that internally, we need to, we need to take a look at the market. It's just that the market may not be ready for us.
And I know it's disappointing for some employees because we've, we make modifications in HR, just small modifications with the classifications between survey cycles. And I think we do a pretty good job. We do the best we can. But then, it's kind of like an audit of us and our decision-making too. So, it's like, hey, you know, John, you and HR have done this, this and this since the last time we looked at it. Is it, was it really the right decision? How's it match up with the market? And I know employees keep track of this and they wait for us to do this. But as I said earlier, I don't think we'd get an accurate picture and I don't think it would do justice to, to, you know, how the employees view this and how important it is to our organization. So...
All right. Thank, thank you. So, councilmembers, I just want to share with you, I do see that we have several department heads here this evening with us. Thank you, department heads, for joining us. If you, as a councilmember, would like to ask any other questions related to the other enhancements or operating CIP, it looks like we have Chief Stanley from the fire department, Chief Smith from the police department, Jim Collins, transportation, city attorney. And, and we've talked with Mr. Robbie. I see Mr. Maurer is here as well. Certainly, you know, councilmembers can inquire between now and, and next week. But since they have joined us this evening, does anyone, Councilmember Mugerhour?
For, Madam Mayor, just so you know, after Mr. Mugerhour goes, poor Mr. Ford has been trying to get your attention.
I'm sorry, Mike. I'm having a hard time seeing your hand up there.
I will defer to Mr., I'll defer to Mr. Ford first because she's absolutely right. He's been trying and then I'll follow him if that's all right.
Your light is shining and it's not catching my eye. So, good eyes for you other, you other folks.
I'm blessed with a very forgettable face and presence. It's, it's useful at times. No, no worries at all. I guess my, my main question here would be for Chief Stanley. The, I guess, overall, I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole, but I'm, I'm inclined to try to, anything that's going to increase the levy, I think is going to be really hard to do this cycle, given what we're facing over the next couple of years. So, I'm intrigued by the fire department's proposal to, to offset their, the funding for their three positions with overtime costs. But I'd be curious to hear from the chief what the service impact would be if we were to do one or two as opposed to three.
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. The, the struggle that we have with only doing two is that we're on a three-platoon schedule, you know? So, not like one first shift, second shift, you know, third shift, meaning swings and graveyards, but it's a 24-hour period. So, if we don't add someone to cover all three shifts, you know, add one person per shift, we're not going to have the, the same outcomes. And that's, it's hard to just add one person to one shift. Well, now you can't predict where that overtime is going to come. So, we may be great one day, but the next two days, we're back into paying overtime. You know, so that's really what drove us to three. You know, as you might recall from the previous presentations, the recommendation was 3.2. You know, and that's, that's pretty difficult to accomplish. We're sitting, rounding down to three makes sense. That way, we can put one per shift. And it does give us latitude and we do have the ability to move personnel from shift to shift. So, if, you know, heaven forbid, something happened to three firefighters on one shift where they, you know, all three had a knee replacement, had to be out for six months, we could level that out to help manage the overtime more. But really for it to have its full impact, we'd have one per shift. I mean, I, granted, I wouldn't, wouldn't turn down one or two, but I said, the model is designed based on one per shift. Thank you.
Mugerhour and then Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Ford, actually, I had, I had a very similar question and I'd gotten the answer from City Manager Roloff as well that, because I was thinking maybe if, you know, you know, what would be the impact or could we do, you know, just one or two as well? It's that 24-on, two-day off shift that, that our firefighters work that, that's the reason we need three. Because I was thinking along the same lines, you know, if we could just do two, maybe, you know, is that an option? And turns out the, the benefit's just not there if we don't do the whole thing or the whole, the whole kit and caboodle, I guess. You know, I, I stated it during the budget hearing myself. I'm supportive, very supportive, especially if it's revenue neutral. If it's not, it's concerning. If it, if it turns out to be not, it's very concerning. The last thing we want to do as an organization, as, as leaders, you know, on this council, is add staff. And then the next budget cycle, turn around and let that staff go because of the massively negative impacts that that will have within the organization. Doesn't matter if it's, what happens within the fire department will have an impact on public works and parks and, and it will be felt everywhere. So, that's why I'm, you know, taking a serious look at, at your request, Chief Stanley. I don't know if you or Mark want to talk, maybe Mark, you know, we talked a little bit about just how can we fund this or how, how can you manage it best? Mark, do you want to maybe jump in and, and talk about managing, managing this a little bit? And, and if, because I made, I made a comment, if, you know, if Chief Stanley comes, comes next year and that number didn't look, look like what we're expecting, it, it's going to be a tough budget. How can you manage him and manage that as well, I guess, collectively?
Yeah. The, yeah, it sort of came to me during the, the council discussion during the, the budget workshop a couple of weeks ago. And it came to me that, you know, periodically, particularly with public safety because the amount of lead time we need to replace somebody is pretty significant. And it's not uncommon that at the beginning of the year, we'll have, I'll just say, five vacancies in fire. And so, the, the chief will come to me and, and request the five people to be able to start the recruit academy, which is a pretty rigorous program. There are sometimes you lose some people. Either they, they can't cut it or unfortunately, we've seen people that have left and said, well, I get a better offer. I really wanted to be here. And so, we always talk about how many people we should recruit for, knowing that there might be some drop-off. In recent years, we've also been aware of vacancies that have not yet occurred, but somebody is on leave pending retirement. Or we know from firehouse talk, we've had somebody is going to be retiring at a certain point, but they're not prepared to make the announcement. And there's no requirement for them to have to do that. So, we've kind of, what we've done is we've authorized more than what they, we've authorized them to overfill the position, knowing full well that by the time the recruit academy is done, that vacancies actually do exist. So, we pay a little bit of money on the front end, but then we avoid paying money because if we, we only bring in five recruits and then suddenly by May, there's eight vacancies. Well, then we have to run another recruit class and the overhead costs of running a recruit class, a second recruit class in a year, it can be pretty, if not money-consuming, it's absolutely time-consuming because our training chief has to put so much effort into, to doing the training. So, one of the thoughts I had was, as an alternative, is allow me, which I, I have food discretion anyway already, to overfill by three and add that to the equation and see how it goes. If we can get some savings in overtime, as the chief is projecting, then we could look at that being a permanent change. If it doesn't work, then we revisit it and say, well, it didn't work out. We're not going to authorize as many and we'll just go back to the normal authorized strength from the council for future years. That way, then it doesn't look like... That way, then it doesn't look like we're eliminating positions. I'm not a fan of eliminating positions in public safety, especially in the circumstances in which it's just an experiment, it didn't work out. Why don't we just, why don't we just try it, just filling a few extra positions and see if it works? In theory, what the chief proposing makes sense. In theory, in reality, I've seen it work. I've done this in other areas. I haven't done it specifically in fire, but I've done it, I've done it with public safety before. I've done it in police. I've done it in police dispatch. I haven't done it in fire, but the principle absolutely can work if it's, if it gets executed properly. And I'd be willing to to experiment with that, report on the progress to council. And, you know, at this time next year, if it's working, we could make it a permanent fixture. Did that cover it? Matt, is that kind of where you were going or is there something else you wanted me to talk about?
No, that that did. If I could just just finish that part up and then I'll, I'll shut up on this one. No, that did, that did answer my questions on that, you know, coming into it. I was, I don't like the giving you that authorization without us actually signing off on the the budget for it, you know, that that we are authorizing it within our budget, that we're, you know, we're giving our stamp of approval. But I think in this case, it's it's worthy of a trial. And and you two managing that, you know, I have faith and trust in you guys. And if it doesn't work, it's an experiment that that we tried and we can easily go back from. So I'm, I'm interested in hearing from my fellow council members, but I'm willing to to support that that type of an idea.
Yes, Councilmember Allison Asby.
I, I didn't really have anything to say, Madam Mayor, just other than if this was a path that we were going to go regarding these positions, that it was something that I was willing to offer flexibility on. So Mr. Mookerhour actually said it well.
Other council members, I see that Councilmember Paschal had another duty to attend to. But certainly, if anyone else has follow-up questions, speak now or, you know, follow up offline in between now and the 10. Mr. Roloff, what are you looking for us in more detail in terms of direction tonight?
Really, it was just to make sure that we're on track. If there's any of these that you specifically want to sponsor, I will just point out, the only ones that have been sponsored so far are are only the ones that are at the bottom. That is purely coincidental. Mr. Mookerhour has put three of them. The mayor's put one. None of the other ones have been proposed as putting on the table. Well, now, all that means is they're ready to make a motion to to lay out that amendment. So if there's anything, please let us know. As Mr. Van Gompo said, if you could let us know by tomorrow, we're going to send this. And I'm looking at my other screen, the budget amendments sheet that was revised last Friday for you. We will revise it again and send it out to you on Friday. And then you'll have your menu of items from which to choose. The idea behind, Mr. Van Gompo's put a levy impact with all of these, gives you a rough idea of what it would be. If you want to sponsor any of these or have some other suggestions, please get them to us. Russ, what were you saying? You're hoping like tomorrow afternoon, so you can get them all packaged up and we can get it to you to put that out there for Friday? And I got Council, met Councilmember Ford, I got your notes, so I can, I can put you on that.
That would be correct, Mark. I just pointed, want to point out that last year, we did take some motions, actual motions in it on the amendments prior to the night of passage. So if if there's comfortable and somebody wants to make a motion tonight in a second and you want to adopt or include an amendment in a formal way tonight, I think that that helps solidify. So I'm not here thinking, is this one in or this one out? You know, what's the status of number three? What's the status of five and six? So they seemed to work out well last year.
A question for City Attorney Lawrence and then Councilmember Ford and then Mookerhour. As City Attorney, is, I guess, a parliamentary procedure question. Given that we're in direction and discussion with City Manager, are you comfortable with that? A motion being made tonight?
As long as the and the direction, it's been properly noticed, so you can do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, then I'll, then I'll make a motion to include amendment three. Enhancement number three for the three positions for the fire department.
I'll second it so we can have further discussion.
All right, discussion. Councilmember Mookerhour.
Mark, in terms of our just, our discussion, you know, two minutes ago, is this one that we would, this wouldn't be one that we would add in as an enhancement? We're just giving you the, the, the authorization, we're giving you the okay to do it after the fact? This wouldn't necessarily be an enhancement to the budget. Is that correct?
That would be my recommendation. One of the things that is on that enhancement list is a reduction in overtime, and I wouldn't propose that either. I would just propose that we go through over our authorized strength and work it that way and then see how the results are. If it's, it's as good as advertised, and I don't mean to put chief on the spot, it's as good as advertised. We'll get some good savings on overtime and we can report that back. And we can plan accordingly for the following year. But if it doesn't, then we can say, well, it was a nice experiment. It didn't work and we didn't impact the budget one way or the other, except that we shuffled some line items around. So but at least it gets it on the table. And if that's what council wants to discuss, that'll be fine.
Back to Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, that's my bad then. I'm happy to withdraw that. I don't want to propose something that is is inconsistent with the the management strategy we just discussed.
Other discussion?
I think, problematic wise, I think I've got to, also, I'll remove, I'll remove my second from that as well.
All right, motion withdrawn. And Councilmember Mookerhour.
So then, and thank you, Russ, and because I had wanted to try to keep this or try to try to keep it clear and clean and by doing some things tonight that it, that it makes Tuesday easier. So I'm going to move to add in amendments five and six into the 2021 budget. This would be for the water utility operations supervisor and the water utility office assistant.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Erickson seconds discussion on motion to include enhancements number five and six, no impact on the levy. All right. No discussion, please take the roll.
Mookerhour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Councilmember Mookerhour.
Sorry to be hogging the show. If somebody else wants to go, I'll be happy to shut up. But no time like the present to see what, what the, what my fellow council members appetites are for for enhancement number one. So I'll move to also approve for add in enhancement number one to the 2021 budget. That would be for the creation of a tuition assistance program for $100,000 under the Internal Benefit Fund.
Are you making a motion?
If I didn't, if I didn't include the word, I move to include enhancement number one in the 2021 budget. Sorry.
Yes, we need a second.
I'll second.
And discussion on Internal Benefit Fund Create Tuition Assistance Program, enhancement number one. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. I think, so I'm supportive of of this fund. I think it's a great way for us to be able to attract and retain employees. I wish I had this opportunity as someone who's working full time and in grad school right now. But I want to say I'm also supportive of the the down payment assistance fund. But I think I want to make sure that as we're trying this out for the first year, that we have the right, you know, kind of dosage for this to make sure that it's actually worth it for employees to utilize this program. So I think, I think it's a good idea for us to kind of try this out, have enough funding in for tuition assistance right off the bat to see what the the interest is and make sure that we're able to cover, cover that interest for everybody. So I'm supportive.
All right, no further discussion on the motion. Please take the roll.
Mookerhour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Present.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried back one present.
And then I am going to actually pull number eight because of the earlier discussion that Mr. Davis indicated. We will have another opportunity to add to the sold on OSHKOSH existing down payment assistance that that could be a bit broader. So I will withdraw number eight.
And Madam Mayor, we'll, we'll work on that. Appreciate your, your interest in that. And Mr. Davis, you know, I'll, I'll make sure he's working with his staff on how to package that in a way that we can perhaps take care of it in another way.
Yes.
I know your interest is still there and you'll, if I don't do anything, you'll be reminding me in a couple of months and that's okay.
But not just, not just hers, but you know, especially once Alan chimed in about the different funding sources, you know. I think there's councils, council wants to hear more. So we'll all hold you accountable, but yeah, let's, let's hear more.
Yeah, let's hear, I think we got to kick around some other ideas. So I appreciate that.
All right, then, are we, I think we're now at a point where we can take a motion to go into closed session? I have a motion, I have here on the updated agenda, a closed session for some reason. Is that?
No, that, I'm sorry, that was in your Friday. That was a repeat from last year and I apologize for that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's, so we since took that out because somebody said, what's the closed session about? And I was like, I don't know what you mean. And we saw it on that other page. So just, electioneering, electioneering jitters. We were working on a lot of stuff.
Yes, yes, I thought that there must have been something that came up very recently for that to to get added in. So then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Again.
All in favor?
No, it's roll call.
Oh, roll, roll call because we're virtual. Yes, please.
Mookerhour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, everyone.